Please hand in my means pledge. I am the guilty citizen of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, consent agenda. Everyone had a chance to review it? Motion by Jorgensen, second by Shay to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion has carried. First up, Greg Mathis, PL-566 Inspector, West Potawatomi Soil and Water, and Brooke Bauer, Conservation Assistant, West Potawatomi Soil and Water, presentation on PL-566 structures. Morning!
Laura, would you want to introduce yourself to the board?
Yeah, my name's Laura Ferguson. I'm the District Conservationist for West Potawatomi Soil and Water Conservation District.
I'm Greg Mathis. I'm the inspector you refer to. Retired from the NRCS. Spent most of, most of 20 some years over in Oakland, a couple of years over here, a couple, three years over here, and working for the NRCS in different capacities. But currently, I'm working on these PL-566s. And what I kind of want to do today, I guess, is just shortly give you a little bit of the history, and a little bit of the partnership, and perhaps an invitation today. So, we'll start right into it with, yeah, these were built in 1960, they say 1980, although I dispute that a little bit, because I came on in about 1989, and I was green, I didn't know anything, and I remember this engineer says, "Get in the pickup." And we went out to a couple sites, and they haven't even started anything yet. I didn't know what was going on, and I heard the word "PL," or the term "PL-566" a couple of times, that I recall. Anyway, here I am, you know, 40 years, 40, 60 years later, and those sites are now structures that I'm going back to check out. And so, that's the beginning of it. The PL-566 was actually erosion, a law passed to fund these structures here in Pot County to control erosion. There's also some flood control advantages. There's 60 sites in West Pot that I keep track of, and maybe 60% of them, or, yeah, 60% of them might be road structures or culverts and some shoots. And the other 30 or 40%, I'd really have to count them out a little bit better than I have, but are ponds. A couple of them are right near a road. A lot of them are back in the farmstead. So, we've got to kind of work for some of these landowners to get back in there and check them out once in a while, make sure they're flowing properly. But we have, and to get back there, we need these easements. They're perpetual easement. They're, do want to clarify, they're not necessarily a specific path. They're just kind of gives us a right to, hey, we got to go see this. And I like to go with the farmer and say, "How do you like me to best get there?" Because sometimes there's a crop to deal with and other issues. But it's interesting. They're, although it's for erosion, initially for design for erosion control, I maintain that there's some other benefits. And one of those is flood control. These things have a capacity to them. So, when we get these big rains and big periods of time, and we have non-drought periods of times, and we're getting a lot of water, these things can have a capacity to hold water. They also slow it down. You know, we were just talking this morning about Indian Creek that flows through Council Bluffs. And the culvert that, down there by Taco Bell where it goes underground, and the culvert coming all the way from the north, down into the Taco Bell where it goes underground, that used to get filled up with sediment back in the old, old days. And we're talking about before the 60s. And so, this area was designed to, one of the tools to help protect that and slow that down were all these flood control projects and structures up there, up to the north mostly. And it certainly helped that culvert. So, that's part of it. I also think on the erosion control part of it is, of course, what you usually think of is coming off of these farm fields and all that. We slowed, it slows that sediment down somewhat to flow down to the Council Bluffs. I also think it does a lot of good in the, what we call the stream bank erosion. As we slow that water down, we get it kind of, you know, it's coming from up here to down there, as you go from north of Pot County to down here in Council Bluffs, where we're pretty low. You know, we try and control that all the way with these different structures. And when you slow that down, and these creeks, Indian Creek's a big one, we've got five watersheds here at north of town that is designated for this PL-566. But as you slow that down, the stream bank gets saved by quite a bit. So, that's, I guess, a couple other benefits I wouldn't mention. It's a little more private and personal, as if some of these do become, for some people living nearby are on that ground, a recreational area. No doubt about that, that some people don't them up, make them pretty nice. We don't have anything to do with that.
Do you put fish in them, or does?
No, no. We're just strictly the structure.
What question? Do you dig them out when they silt in?
That's a good question. You know, the lifetime of these are basically about 50 years, 40 to 50 years. And then, there's always a bad discussion on whether you should clean them out or not. Well, they were designed for that 40 or 50 years for sediment and for oil, in most cases. Usually by then, they've done their job to clean them out and re-renovate them. It's almost, it almost evolved to go to a different site for the cost reasons and build a new one, depending on the site and all that. But we have never, we don't get into digging them out.
So, I'm getting into the weeds too far. The original agreements with those were, there was three legs to the stool. The feds, the state, and the county.
Yes.
And one of our partners walked away.
Yeah.
Somewhere along the line.
So, it's county and the district now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
After 50 years.
Yeah. Of course, I, I don't know, I don't know the history for sure either, but the feds, I think, you know, that was the original PL-566.
Yeah.
In that agreement, in that agreement, as I understand, it was the, turned over to the local county and Soil and Water Conservation District to maintain.
That wasn't in the original agreement.
That was not?
No.
Go ahead, saying that. You're on top of that better, nice guy.
Well, it is what it is.
Yeah. So, and then, where are we at here? Ah, there's a couple of pictures here. One is roadside culvert. That's, these are both older pictures. And one on the right is what we call Indian Creek Site Two, which is just north of town, about four or five miles. It's about a mile, really roughly, mile east and mile away. Quarter mile, actually. And that is actually before, I think, Brookhead was renovated.
Yes.
So, this is, both those pictures are pretty old. On the right side of that road coming through there, there's been quite a bit of renovation and emergency spillway put in. Lot, also a lot more homes. And then, as far as operation and maintenance, yeah, what are we trying to do here? Well, we go around and check them out, make sure they're flowing properly. Just the structure itself, not the shoreline, just the structure, the inlet and the outlet. Make sure that there's, I haven't lately, but we do get problems with beavers. Debris flowing in the water, plugging it up, mud, maybe plugging up that inlet. There can be some erosion under the outlet, but we always have to battle saplings. We can't allow trees on the structure themselves. And there's 60, 60 of these, so, of these. So, when I came on five or six years ago, there had been no, not much maintenance done for a period of time. And so, we had some bigger projects we had to do. We're getting on top of it, like I can say.
That one that you showed up there is a high-hazard one.
Yeah.
And the DNR, do they still inspect it annually?
Yeah, every other year.
Every other year?
Yep.
We've got two of them.
Okay.
And that's been one of them.
Okay. They're doing them every other year?
And that leads me to, I'd love to show it to you, and get you on a little Schwedabas, and we can have some water refreshments available here, and do a little, I can, we can go into some of the, more of the history of it. But it is a partnership that I work for, I answer really to the Soil and Water Conservation. I answer to Brooke, so I got to keep her head. And I attend their meetings almost every month, and probably because I'm curious and I kind of want to see what's going on, still on that, still got that conservation mind going. But I work for them, and I'm not, don't put in, but.
Greg, throw some dates out there, and we'll see what we can do.
Alright. And I worked with somebody to get those dates together, or do I put that with?
Jeanette Johnson.
Jeanette? Okay. Okay. Those are, I think, okay?
Would you want to do it before harvest started, or after harvest?
Yeah, I would think October would be a good month. Things are starting to simmer down, you can see a little more. Won't be too hot, won't be too cold. Doesn't make sense?
Figure that, yeah. It'll work.
I've been on.
Yeah, you know.
I've been on two or three of them already. But it's, you know, it's, it's great that we have you to do this, Greg, to be honest with you, and I appreciate you taking it on for West Pot Soil and Water. Next, Greg, we'll have to try to be working on him too, to see if we can keep it going. So, for, I don't know, 15 years, there was nobody.
Yeah.
And nothing, so, we did have, oh, shoot. He's the engineer down in Mills County now, he was ours.
Jake Farrell?
Jake. We had Jake go out on an assignment and do a pretty thorough look-through of all of them.
We started out, when I came here, there was, I think in the kitty, I'm talking about the financing now, was about, I don't know, we had 50 some thousand dollars, and I, you know, I was kind of green then too, but we had some bigger projects to do, and so, we whittled that down. We, we have the allocation once a year of 15,000 from you guys. And we still got a few projects that need to be completed, so we're doing okay, but we got to watch what we're doing, which is not a bad place to be.
And Greg, you're aware of the Beaver Bounty Program?
Yes, I am.
And we've got conservation in the audience today.
Yep.
Is there any request there?
Well, I can't explain why, you know, I can't figure the darn beaver out at all, really, that's been me like, but they don't seem to be bothered the last two years too badly.
That's, that's exactly our bounty type.
Yeah.
But I'm aware of it, and I know a couple people that would, I can call if I find one, and we haven't fast had them, but it just happened in the last year or two.
Well, we set up the funding for that based on our best guess, so we need the experts in the room to let us know if we need to increase that, or if it's necessary anymore, so.
That's a good question. Have to bowl that over a little bit, I guess, but I did, like I said, we didn't have any problem the last year or two, so it hasn't been right by face.
It's working. It's working.
Yeah.
Just real quick, I have a question about the Les Hills. Is there erosion control going on in the Les Hills areas, or is Les Hills not considered an area for erosion control?
Brooke, you, you know, from the PL-566 point only standpoint, only if there is one up there, and they're usually down lower than up in the hills, but, go ahead, Brooke, or Laura?
Private landowners. Yeah, I mean, we work with private landowners all the time up in the Les Hills area to do erosion controls. Not so much big structures like that, since the slopes up there are just a little bit too.
I just, you know, I look at the slopes up there, you know, maybe you go up on Interstate, for instance, I mean, they're almost straight up and down.
Yes.
I don't know if that's a cause for erosion or not. I have no idea, but you guys, you guys take a look at that too.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Brooke, I believe that, and Greg, that the 15,000 dollars that the board provides for maintenance on those structures has been that way for a long, long time.
I can remember, yeah.
And I think that one of the discussions at one of the meetings, it came that it's probably not even adequate anymore with that 15. It should be a little bit more. Do you have any idea, or have a number that in mind that you think might take care of that?
You know, I think if we had another 5,000, we have 15 now, another 20, another 5,000 bringing in 20 would, would help us know that we're, if we have some smaller situations, if we had big ones coming up, we're going to come to you guys, like, like right now, we have some really big ones, but, you know, something's destroyed or whatever. But, but for maintenance purposes, yeah, caught, my, the people, the contractor I worked with quite a bit, he used to give us, give me an estimate, and he was always below it when it came in, the bill came in. Well, I'm noticing that he's not backing off of it like he used to. It's just costing more. And like you say, we've had that 15,000 for years and years, well, from the beginning, I think.
So, we've already provided you with the 15,000 for this fiscal year, correct?
No, it's on your agenda for today.
Good timing.
Well, I thought when we talked about that, you said it was already signed, right?
Well.
Well, we've spent what we got last August. The allocation for this next year is on today's meeting.
And I, I heard just a few weeks ago, I'd gone to Brooke and said, "How are we doing money-wise? I have a couple of projects to do." I mean, we got, this was just three weeks ago, and you see those trees off to the left? They're no longer there. We have to get those off of that structure also. And they had, another area of that, they had a whole bunch of trees. So, there's some of that that comes up, and what was it going to make, I wonder? It's going to be a given too, I bet. But we, we've got more of that coming.
Between?
Us and county between you and the soil and water.
I've seen an O and M agreement, but I don't know that it necessarily listed a dollar amount. I know East Pot was different, because they only have, what, three? Two or three structures? Yes. Well.
That probably ought to be brought up and.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Yeah.
We'll do it. Appreciate it.
So, we'll just include the 15, and take a look at it.
It's the only thing they need to pick.
For you, for you that aren't really familiar with these structures, I'd be, I got a lot of respect for them. They're, I'm not an engineer, but I just impressed with what they put together from these watersheds. If we can get you out on a couple, three sites, maybe two hours of your time, get you all together, we get a little more history, you can ask questions, we'll get out of the bus, look at some of these sites. It's just, whenever you do anything, there's always maintenance. You will not.
Especially when, especially when it gets 50 years old or better.
Yeah. Yeah, including, yeah.
I know the, I know.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
More to the tour.
Good. We'll get on that date.
Okay.
Come in. October, this is already, I don't sit there.
Tuesday, it might work well after our meeting.
Say again?
Tuesday afternoon.
Okay.
After our meeting might work well.
Okay.
We're good.
I'll work with Jeanette on that.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Mark Schumaker, Director, and Jeff Franco, Director, Conservation. And I asked them to come in and give us an update on conservation. Turn it over to Mark.
I think you probably all got this in your packet. Yeah. I'll use your hard copy anyway. Just got to kill a few trees.
Fun didn't work very well.
Well, good. Pretty colorful.
Yeah, this one's green.
Trees are renewable.
Oh. I didn't think that was going to slip by you.
What? I planted a bunch of trees sometime in here. Yeah, Susan asked us to come in and give like a year-end reports of how conservation did throughout the years, and some activities, how the numbers played out. Kylie made me write a letter, so that's in the front. And the page after that, on page four, kind of highlights some of our major events, accomplishments that we've had. All those top, top things are projects, activities, and then you get down to the bottom. When, when you receive awards, like we have for the parks, it kind of reaffirms that, yeah, all that stuff you're doing up at top really matters, and you kind of get recognition for that. So, that was kind of important. The next page is our financial reportings, and I'll let Jeff, we're going to kind of tag-team this a little bit, so he's going to jump in here and talk about that. So, it shows our revenues and our expenses for both the parks, Potawatomi Conservation, and for Mount Crescent ski area. And Jeff did some economic analysis for, for the parks and all the activities and everything that we've done, and I'll let you jump in and talk a little bit too.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, page five really just gives a high-level summary of the financials of the Conservation Board, how things operated, along with the Enterprise Fund at Mount Crescent as well, and how those perform. Summarized just at a high level there. When you get down to the economic analysis, this is something that more county conservation boards are beginning to do. They just recognize the role that tourism and outdoor recreation plays in the community for attracting people, but also attracting dollars to those communities as well. And so, something that the Iowa County Conservation System and the Iowa DNR, they tag-team, and they put together some numbers that go with each outdoor recreational activity, and what type of spending occurs in the local communities and those local economies where those parks are located. And so, that bottom portion just kind of gives, again, a high-level estimate on, on what the economic analysis, what the economic impacts are of county conservation parks and activities in the local communities in this county as well. I think the big takeaway here is that for every $2, or for every $1 spent, the return to the community from an economic impact is $2.53, which in our opinion is a pretty good return. Those are based on numbers that each RV camper would spend. Anytime you're going to prepare for an RV camping trip, you're going to be getting fuel, you're going to be getting food, all of these items come along with it. So, they put a number to that, and then we can calculate how many campers we have, and come up with a rough, rough estimate there as well. One thing to note on this is that the numbers they provided were from their 2012 estimates. And so, these numbers are likely low. Our economic impact is most likely higher than what it is right now, what we're going on this page. That was the last time the study was conducted, and that's what they're using, so that's what we use for this as well, but just something to kind of keep in mind, stick in your back pocket.
Okay, and before we go off that page, I did hand out another couple pages along with the reports. Just pointing out that we underspent our budget by about $83,000. Our revenues exceeded our expected revenues by about $87,000. On certain years in the past, we've, we've come back and asked the supervisors if we could retain some of those funds to use for unforeseen projects and expenses that we've have come up. We're doing that this year. So, I don't know if it's a decision that has to be made right now. It can be a discussion right now. We'd like to get $86,000 back to put into either our reserve or local option tax that we can spend on projects that we did not foresee, such as storms, replacing roofs, upgrading roofs in the parks from asphalt to metal. We've noticed that a lot of the metal roofs that we had in the parks didn't sustain damage. All the asphalt roofs did, so that's, there's going to be an added expense there to upgrade those roofs. And I know Tim's probably going to ask about our local option tax projects. We currently have about $580,000 in local option tax projects expected to work on this fiscal year, and that exceeds what we expect to get in the actual revenue. It's about $475,000. So, we don't have any money in local option tax to help pay for some of these other expenses that we didn't see coming.
Have you done your report?
No. Should we keep going?
Yeah, we can, we can hit this at the end if that's.
Okay, that's fine.
Don't want to spoil the moment.
Yeah, it's not going to spoil it. So, going on with the report, there's things that conservation does that we do. You don't see a monetary return. One of the examples would be environmental education and the volunteer hours. We do a lot with the public, with school programs, and you can kind of see the break, breakout of where all those programs happen, how many volunteer hours we have in the parks, and we have volunteer hours in all of the parks. So, it's, it's awesome to see that happen. Another gauge of how we're doing with conservation is in the web visitors and the social media reach. Jeff, go ahead and step in and do whatever you want to do.
Yeah.
Notes that you want to talk about.
Sure. You know, I'll touch on the volunteers real quick. You know, we're pushing 10,000 volunteer hours for the year, which is, is a little over for full-time employees. So, we're really getting a lot of support from volunteers in what we're doing. They're offsetting a lot of our tasks, taking on a lot for us, and helping us to be the department that we are. So, very, very thankful for the volunteers that we have. From the social media standpoint, I think one of the biggest things that stands out to me is the increase in the followers that we've received. It's a 166% increase year over year. And so, that's not just people coming to casually look at our social media, but people who are actively choosing to follow us and stay tuned in to what we're doing. It tells us that we are doing things that are attracting people, that they're interested in, that we're on the right track with some things as well.
As you go through the report, as you look through their fees, this will be your overview, you gradually see that we're increasing year after year in a lot of the areas. A thing that I always like to note is where people are coming from when they're using our parks. You can see that in our daily and camping usage graphs on page 10. And it's kind of how we expected it would be. A lot of the use that you see at Arrowhead, Baton Bends, Old Town, they're all come, most of those people are coming from Iowa. When you jump to Hitchcock, there's, there's a bigger jump towards Nebraska as far as usage. And then, the last page on this report shows our park memberships that we partner with the foundation, and also the numbers on Mount Crescent as far as the ski season, and where those, where those items fell throughout the year. And I want to put a special thanks out to Kim and Kylie, and I think Dustin had some input on this as far as all the work put into the annual report. So, we tried to keep it short, used a lot of pictures, a lot of graphs.
This is nice.
Make it a little more interesting and easier to read.
Yep. Really nice.
Got a new date coming up for fundraiser, for a while?
September 12.
September 12, down at the landing. September twelve, down at the landing.
Have you thought anymore about online camping reservations?
That is something we've continued to discuss. Uh something we didn't include in our local option sales tax estimates, but probably something that we should seriously consider this coming year uh and include in those estimates as well. At least at least a test site perhaps at the the upper Hitchcock Nature Center, pick a small site uh and see how that goes for us.
I know when price of fuel, when you pull out the driveway with the camper, you wanna know where it's gonna be parked.
You wanna place the land, for sure. Absolutely.
You you said your return on dollars estimate is two, two dollars and fifty-three cents. That was 2012 estimate?
Those are 2012 numbers, uh the dollars for for activity. Yeah.
Could you give me some kind of idea of what it would be today? I mean, just rough guess?
Yeah, rough guess, I might increase that by thirty percent or so.
Thirty percent or so.
That'd be my guess based on inflation.
Something that we don't really address here, but um it'd be nice to have some additional research done sometime, uh if we can do that. But uh on, you know, how many of our residents or new residents come in and make make comments and or have visited our parks and and may have been one of the reasons they came to Potawatomi County was obviously it's not only gonna be our parks, but was that a factor? And I I believe it would be in many cases.
I I hear that time and time again today, people I talk to.
And frankly, we've been working on that for years on on that. We've gotten to a point now, and especially with some newer amenities, that that is only gonna increase as we move forward. Um we're at a level now that it is affecting some of those those uh opinions. And uh with some of the newer um opportunities that we're gonna provide, whether it be at Crest Ridge or Hitchcock or another area that we may add in the future, uh those are gonna be, just gonna increase our numbers. And you know, we hope by that, we we we, some of those, we actually get some of those as volunteers, some of those people. And also park permits, so all that kind of snowballs.
Jeff, I'll add one more thing. Uh when we talk about this number here, that two dollars fifty-three cents is uh the parks, traditional parks only. That does not include the impact from the Enterprise Fund. Uh those numbers were skewed a little high, so I have to not to include those here. This is just based on what Hitchcock Nature Center, the without the Enterprise Fund, Baton Bends, Arrowhead, Old Town, there is a park, what they provide. Uh it's an economic impact on those communities.
The quality of events at each of the parks has really stepped up too. It's it's pretty neat to go to the s- the tapping of the trees. Your last weekend, you had a stargazing deal up at Hitchcock that was really cool. And Kylie stepped up on that, and I really, my wife and I came away from that really impressed. So that was fun. I've watched Hitchcock grow from when it was Y M C A camp, and then a bunch of us helped stop the dump. And then to watch it grow, and Mark, you were a big part of that, making it expand and really become something special. So that's really neat to see that in that area come together.
Good choice to make Dee the cover girl.
I didn't see a girl.
Well, young families looking to relocate. I mean, you know, outdoor recreational facilities, trails, parks, all of that come in, come into play.
Absolutely.
Is that what you're seeing too?
Oh yeah, the the national firms that are doing research on this suggest that outdoor recreational spaces, trails are always in the top five.
Potawatomi County is a big county. You got a lot of more space.
That's right. I feel there's a lot of untapped potential here as well, so there's.
I like that term, untapped potential.
Yeah.
Now do we circle back to the eighty-six thousand dollar question?
Yeah.
Well, it's not on the agenda, but we can certainly talk about it.
We can talk about it, but.
Yeah, on the first page, you know, if you take a look at that eighty-two, that that could tell us that uh we're taxing too much. So we could take another penny and a half of the levy since you're not using all those funds. And on the backs, on the backside, the second part, that eighty-six that you spoke about, if I can, that's that's an estimate. And when we look at uh those funds, what would happen if you didn't make those revenues, Mark or Jeff? What do we come up with that, those funds? Do we take it out of your local option sales tax to pay us back?
That'd be something, that'd be further discussion, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, see, uh and that could happen. That's, there's a possibility that could happen this year. What'd we lose? Uh two months of revenue off of Arrowhead? Was it that much?
For the bridge that was out?
Yeah.
Uh I wouldn't say a full two months, but there was an impact there.
Yeah, there's, that would be, I don't know how much. I mean, you're gonna, you'll be able to tell next year.
Right.
And then um, I I think it's a novel idea, it's one that we've done before. There's some other departments that could make that claim as well. Uh you know, the jail, if the jail budgeted three million for federal prisoners and brought three point five million in, do they want the extra five hundred thousand dollars to spend on something else? Or should we lower the levy for that? So that's the discussion. Uh Lee Boss, she predicts her revenue on the interest side of things, and if it comes in more, well, we don't certainly, she wouldn't do it anyway. We wouldn't want her to spend an extra million just because she made more interest on her on her investments. So I think that's that's a discussion for the board to have and oh, we could use that eighty thousand and pay down your debt to the board.
The Enterprise Fund's debt or the Conservation Board's debt?
The Enterprise Fund's.
Well, this this would be separate. This would be for the Conservation.
We could combine.
Don't know if we can actually.
No.
And the flip side of this, Tim, is also that all of this, it's not like this goes into some coffer and is hid somewhere. This goes directly back into making our parks better places and setting stuff better for the long term. These are projects, all of this would be spent on projects that we need to spend money on, that we need to do something with. So that's where it would go. Now, yes, it it would have to come from tax dollars likely somewhere. But that's a local option sales tax, or it comes straight from the county. How do we wanna do that?
Have you put together a capital plan?
For?
For the parks?
Uh we have, we did one a long time ago.
That would be, that would be helpful for the board to take a look at. Uh what kind of projects are are coming up? What kind of um necessities?
Uh Mark, Mark has a a pretty detailed list of our local option sales tax projects that exceed, I think it was the next eighteen months, were the projects that you had projecting out at very high twenty-five thousand dollars a month. And our projects are still exceeding what we project to come, what would come in with the local option sales tax.
That would be a great study session for the board.
Sure.
Okay. Did you not say you had to do some roofs?
Yes, there are.
And that's what some of this is for?
That's where this this.
Crescent got beat up bad. I mean, the corn out there got beat up. Everybody in town has to get new roofs, the whole town. And you guys got some of that. I'm in favor of the eighty-six thousand going to help this. But I've got metal roof. My shingle roofs got beat up bad. My metal roofs did not. I'm in favor of the metal roof. I'm, I'll stand up and say, I'm I'm in favor of the eighty-six coming to you.
That's where that money would go, it'd go towards paying the difference in in retrofitting our shingle roofs with metal roofs.
It's it's an unforeseen thing.
It's an unforeseen thing.
And if we go to metal, it makes a big difference.
So you need to come back and get on the agenda because it's not not appropriate here today, or anything of that nature. But did we not get insurance funds for that too?
We got, we got insurance to cover the shingles.
So is this, is this the difference in what between insurance and metal?
This is what the.
And you got, and you got those bids?
Uh we're working on the bids. We have a broad estimate.
When you come back, you'll have all your numbers.
Uh ideally, we have this.
Okay.
Will that be before Mark retires?
At the rate this contractor's moving with everything he has on his plate, unlikely, I guess.
I wanted to go.
I do wanna let you guys know that we do every, uh well, every year, we do have uh planning sessions within some of it's strategic, some is financial, so we do have some of those numbers prepared from last year. So that's something we we usually do and update almost every year. So it's something, we have a list, an ongoing list of what we have uh projects going on. Of course, that always is ever-changing, especially with new additions. So that's something we can get together uh and have you take a look at.
Any other questions for conservation? We we will move to the next agenda item, which is recognition of Mark Shoemaker's dedicated service in retirement to the Potawatomi County Conservation Board. His re- um retirement is effective August thirtieth. And we hired Jeff to fill those shoes and carry the Conservation Department forward. And Mark has done a great job of training his successor in that regard, and the boards, the Conservation Board's attendance today. And I know I've heard from a couple of members who couldn't be here that wanted to also acknowledge Mark's commitment to conservation all of these years. So with that, is there anybody on the board that wants to speak?
I circle back to taking that place that was gonna be a dump and then coming forward to the conservation. You taking over. Tremendous, tremendous job, Mark. Thank you. As a taxpayer, I love what's going on up there and throughout our parks in the county. My God, they they have stepped up. We went through Macedonia Park the other day, Old Town. That little park's cool. I don't know if anybody's been out there or not, but all these parks out there have really stepped up so much, and it's it's an experience. It's not just a little park that you go in and play on the playground, although my granddaughter wants to do that every playground. But that's that's neat. It's for everybody. Hope you enjoy it. Thank you, Mark.
Well, I didn't do it alone.
I know you didn't, but you let it, and that's what the key is, leading it. You've got a hell of a team there, and uh that team works hard. You put the vision out there with your board and uh it's worked well.
Mark, I I talked to the person who hired you, uh John Klein. Name sound familiar?
Oh, yeah.
Very proud, very proud. It's important to relay that to you.
Appreciate everything you've done for Potawatomi.
Thank you.
If I'm getting bored, come down here.
I'm gonna plug your work.
And Mark was instrumental in putting the E back in Old Town Park too, and I appreciate that.
You worked. How was all you, Susan?
Can I stand up here so you can see me?
Come on up, Jess.
Well, we'll do one with Mark.
Oh, in the front.
I mean, really, in the front.
He was the uh the director, really.
Mark, on behalf of the board, thanks for your performance. I don't know if you've seen that yet or not.
No, I haven't. Cool, thank you, Joe. Thank you much. Thank you.
Hey. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I get a hug.
I don't wanna hug.
Can you keep it in? Don't lose that.
Can I get a group photo here and then, actually, I would like to have.
Twenty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. What's that?
Can we get a group photo?
You know?
Yeah. All right.
Conservation?
I figure if I take maybe one. No, I'm no roohawk here.
One and done.
Nope, you're in the front row, come right down.
Look all right.
Yeah, supervisor Bell's like nine feet tall, so we're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Peggy, it's your turn. Are you ready?
Ready.
Peggy Lenahan, Tax and Finance Officer, Auditor's Office. Discussion and or decision to approve an authorized board design resolution number fifty-two dash twenty-two four entitled Resolution for Transfer from Gaming Fund to West SWCD Pot County Structures Fund and East SWCD Pot County Structures Fund.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Bell, second by Shay to approve resolution fifty-two dash twenty-four. Is there additional discussion?
All of these, one, two, three, four.
Just cost keeping, this first one is for the uh west and east soil-water conservation districts. It's a a budgeted transfer that we do each year out of gaming.
Peggy, we call the roll, please.
Yes, Chairperson Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Bell.
Aye.
Lookman.
Aye.
Shay. All right. George Anderson.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, next we have resolution fifty-three dash twenty-two four entitled Resolution for Transfer from General Basic Fund to Veterans Relocation Allocation Fund.
I'll second that.
Susan, I ask Peggy to come in and and touch on this for us, so board knows what this, what these funds are for. And uh the project uh that the board put together, I don't know, four, three, four, five years ago, whatever it was.
Fiscal year twenty-two.
On trying to, trying to help uh veterans relocate to Potawatomi County. So with that, Peggy, wanna say a few words?
Yep, they get a, they apply in sixty days of closing, they get a twenty-five hundred dollar closing cost reimbursement. It began fiscal year twenty-two, so July twenty-twenty-one. Since then, we've done twenty-six of these relocation allocations, sixty-five thousand dollars. Houses are ranging anywhere. I think the lowest one was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, the highest was six hundred and forty-eight thousand. Average between the twenty-sixth is about two hundred and thirty to two hundred and seventy thousand dollar homes being purchased. The home has to be over a hundred thousand to qualify for the twenty-five hundred.
So do we know if they're all still in there, houses, those twenty-one?
No, I haven't looked at all of them.
Okay.
But I can't imagine somebody moving out that fast.
Well, the typical, the typical house thing is like anywhere from three to five years, people.
Wow.
You know?
Really?
Oh, yeah. I'm on the far end of that spectrum. Right.
Well, we do keep track of.
You should have gone here.
So they won't be able to get a second one, not even if they move away and come back. So the application doesn't say it once in a lifetime, but it will in the future.
And we, and we've increased, we increased that, didn't we, from?
Were we at twenty-five thousand?
This is the third time we're requesting refunding.
Yeah, I thought so.
True. I I I don't know, but I think we put fifteen thousand maybe the first time up. I don't remember what it was.
Who knows?
It was approved in twenty-five, but we only did ten in the beginning, then we came back and got the additional fifteen.
The general idea, every year, at the beginning of the new fiscal year is to get that fund back up to twenty-five thousand. I don't know what they use throughout the year, but went through most of it last year, right?
Yeah, I think we have seventy-five hundred left in it right now.
That's we just started the year.
Yeah, we did four in July.
Started the year with seventy-five hundred. Started the year with seventy-five hundred.
So that's where we're transferring seventeen-five.
And these are veterans that are moving into Potawatomi County, not, not relocating somewhere else.
No, they're moving into the county.
I think it's really good program, and I'm glad.
It's very, I agree.
Thank you for your administrative oversight of the program.
And thanks for popping.
We have a motion by Jorgensen and a second by Shay to approve Resolution number fifty-three dash twenty-two four. Becky, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Chairperson Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Shay?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Belt?
Aye.
Wickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Threw me off there, Becky.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next, we have Resolution number fifty-four dash twenty-two four entitled Resolution for Transfer from General Basic Fund to Secondary Roads Fund.
So moved. Second.
This is the two notes for the, uh, levy, uh, general basic to roads. Budget for.
A motion by Wickman and a second by Belt to approve Resolution number fifty-four dash twenty-two four. Becky, will you call the roll, please?
Chairperson Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Belt?
Aye.
Wickman? Shay?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Next up, Resolution number fifty-five dash twenty-two four entitled Resolution for Transfer from General Basic Fund to Property Acquisition Improvement Donations Fund.
So moved. Second.
Uh, this is just a budgeted transfer, reducing the, uh, unbalance from basic and increasing the unbalance for the property acquisition improvement fund, which some of that is going for the, uh, public health building.
And we talked about this.
Motion by Belt and a second by Shay to approve Resolution number fifty-five dash twenty-two four. Becky, will you call it, please?
Chairperson Miller?
Aye.
Supervisors Jorgensen?
Aye.
Shay?
Aye.
Wickman?
Aye.
Belt?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, yeah, we haven't signed this, Becky.
Thank you, Becky.
What?
We haven't signed them yet.
All right. Next up, Matt Wyatt, Director of Planning and Development. Discussion and or decision to approve new job description and pay for the position of Inspector Lee. Okay. Hey, Matt.
Hello.
Did we count the salary scales?
Yes, I'm gonna show that to you here in the presentation.
Okay.
About the alignment that we were, that I'm proposing to do for, uh, Planning and Development Department, streamline some positions. As we currently stand, uh, there are five different positions available, we can go to the next slide there. Those five positions that we currently have, four of them are for employment purposes within the department, which we have Building Inspector Two, Building Inspector One. We also have an Environmental Health Coordinator position, a Health Inspector Two, and a Health Inspector One. So you, within my department, you would always see two Building Inspectors and two Inspectors on the environmental health side, whether it's an environmental health coordinator and an Inspector One or Inspector Two, you could have an Inspector, Building Inspector Two and a Building Inspector One. But there's only, there's five positions, four of them are what I consider employable positions, um, as moving along. So what I would like to do is move it into three positions available in the department under the Inspections Division. Three of those would be for employment. You'd have a County Inspector Lead, you'd have potential for a County Inspector Two, and a County Inspector One. Uh, you could inevitably wind up with two different, uh, County Inspector Twos and one lead. You would always have a lead, and then you could have a person in each one of the inspector roles, whether it be two Inspector Ones or two Inspector Twos. That would be what we would be looking at doing. So I wanted to kind of show how those different positions of coordinated into the new roles, where the Building Inspector Two kind of sliding over into an Inspector Two role. Uh, Inspector One, same thing on the Building Inspectors, how the Environmental Health Coordinator fits in with the Environmental Health Inspector Two positions and how they mesh together as far as, um, that job expectations and things like that are in next slide. So the possession of the, the position progression, these are ones that you would hope to land somebody into a position and see them work their way through up to a lead position. But starting at the County Inspector Lead, uh, we'd really be looking for somebody who has about eight years of experience in commercial, industrial, residential building experience, two years of well and septic experience. They would be required on electrical certifications, building certification, mechanical certification, plumbing certification, and plan review certifications. Uh, County Inspector Two, those would be two years of commercial, industrial, and residential building experience, two years of well and septic experience. This position would, uh, also handle our weed commissioner duties as well, so you'd have the one A agri-weed control certification. And, uh, you would have to have the electrical certification as well as building certifications. County Inspector One is your early, your entry level position. Uh, a lot of times, this is somebody who has construction experience and or experience in your well and septic side and can learn the construction experience side of things, so we're looking at one year of experience in residential building or environmental experience. Again, this position would get the one A agri-weed control certification and residential building certification. So, um, that's how, you know, if you look bottom up, that's kind of how a person would progress through these different positions, gaining experience, gaining certifications as they went in through the positions. And the next slide, Mitch. So the pay scales for these, uh, start it up.
We can't see that.
They didn't send us any of that.
Yeah, I can provide you the slides.
Right.
To go along with it, so. Uh, starting on your left-hand side, the County Inspector One is a grade five twenty-seven. That's thirty-four oh seven, starting out, around seventy-one thousand dollars a year. Uh, five twenty-nine is thirty-six forty-nine, around seventy-six thousand dollars a year, starting out. And five thirty-two is your lead inspector, uh, forty forty-four, which is around eighty thousand dollars a year, starting out. So that's where the current stepping grades are right now, and these correlate back to, when you look at the original positions that I showed you, all of these jobs fall somewhere in these pay scales here. We'll go to the next slide, Mitch. Currently on our financial side, our current budgets for the Planning Department shows, uh, you know, our salary line item right now, a hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars, nine hundred thirteen. I put it in the hypers FICA, what we have in budget for insurance, there's some apparel funds and our motor vehicles. So for those two employees, really we have two-hundred-seventy-seven thousand dollars budgeted for those individuals right now. On the environmental health side, again, two employees, two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars budgeted for those two employees. So that has a total budget of five hundred, five hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars on there. Next slide, Mitch.
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
On, on that, on those numbers, you said that salary one eighty-nine was two D.
Correct.
And on the environmental health, you said it's two.
Correct.
But you only had three, so who's the other person?
Right now, that's where we would go back to the four employable positions. I don't have anybody hired right now. We could hire somebody to jump in on the building inspection side of things. Right now, I'm paying out-of-class pay to the environmental health folks to help with building inspections.
So in those numbers, there's only three people.
In those numbers, there's three people budgeted for four. So then this is the proposed budget that we talked about during budget season time. Obviously, with the pay increases that we had, um, those numbers have shifted a little bit, so it is a little bit higher savings back to the county than what was originally broadcast out. So our, in our salary line item, um, total will be four-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, four twenty-five. On the right-hand side, you can see I subtracted the five-hundred-and-fifty-four, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. Uh, that gives us eighty-six thousand dollars in savings to the rural front, rural fund. And that's where both of those departments are allocated from right now.
For this year.
For this year.
But you add an employee, the eighty-sixth coach.
Correct.
Okay, fortunate to know that.
Yes, so so going from the four to the three, you're gonna eliminate a position. And that's where we're gonna get in, we're gonna have a little bit of a conversation about the work that these individuals are doing right now. Now, I did not, there's not a good way to broadcast these reports on a slide. This is an inspection report that comes off of our citizen serve permitting software. All the work that the environmental health inspectors do and our building inspectors do gets logged into our citizen serve system for all of their activities. So for, these are just the inspections that they had conducted within the last three years, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-four. Um, in twenty-twenty-two, you can see that we conducted three thousand and four inspections. Twenty-twenty-three, it dropped just a little bit to two thousand seven hundred and seventy inspections, but we're off to a really good, really strong start this year, you know, we're at sixteen hundred and fifty-four inspections for the year so far.
This is calendar years, right?
This is calendar year.
Okay. Not budget year.
Not budget year, calendar year. So if you, then if you flip over to the next page, just to give you an idea of what inspections that the individuals are carrying out, this gives a little bit of a breakdown. Uh, and I only did this one for twenty-twenty-three, just to give you an idea of the different inspection types that they are conducting out there, which is if it's a building, it, building final inspection, electrical inspections, uh, we list water tests in there as an inspection type, because they are inspecting the well when they're out there doing a water test. Uh, site evaluations for environmental, that'd be your septic and wells. Site evaluations for your buildings, your new structures that are being permitted out there. Septic inspections, footing inspections, time of transfer reviews, plumbing inspections, progress checks, raining and deck, decking inspections, plain follow-ups, swimming pool inspections, well GPS inspections. One of the nice things, this is kind of our partnership with GIS and their department is, is that we map out all of the wells in Potawatomi County, so any new permitted well that comes in, we map it out. If we're out doing a water test and we know we don't have that well mapped out, we map it out with a GPS point. There's a layer within our GIS system that populates that field for us. So we've been trying to go back through and locate as many wells as we can and get them GPSed out on a sheet for us. But, so those are the, those are the inspection types that, um, that this, that these inspectors currently handle on there.
You haven't any idea on how many wells that we don't know that are out there.
Could be a thousand.
Really?
If not more, you know, I mean, there's so many wells out there in the fields that, um...
So if the well guy's gotta go back out to the well and do anything, is that a permissible thing, or is that just maintenance?
It's not permissible, but if we get a cost share request on it?
Yeah.
Then that is a, triggers it, that's a notification for us.
Okay, yes.
And we get, uh, the cost shares have really increased and because they've opened up the funding to allow shot, shot toleration is now a cost share, and so we're getting a lot more of those coming across.
What do those cost?
Uh, I think we can do cost share to three hundred dollars on a shot.
You want to, are you five hundred on closing stuff?
No, we're up to, I wanna say, two thousand.
Closing?
Mm-hmm. I'm handing you out new job descriptions because right before the meeting, I talked to Supervisor Miller, and I had some discrepancies in the naming of the positions, so I wanted to make sure that you all saw that I did go back through and modify these.
Thank you for talking, Matt.
You being a crowded person, copies? Making sure since I can't listen, have these displayable for you.
So are there any questions for Matt about the county lead inspector position? Job description and the paper hour that's associated to it.
I'm, I'll move that for you, Susan.
Second.
Matt, I always appreciate your look, uh, budget, uh, savings. Always. All for that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
The paper position for for this first one, Mitch, do you still have that slide handy, or do we need to designate a salary range?
It is on the grade, the grade is listed on the job description as a five thirty-two. So that is the pay, the pay grade, um, and scale, and then as the county adjusts, I think that's what, you know, it's listed out on all of our job descriptions that way. That way, if this, as the board goes through the years and increases happen with the pay scale, it just stays within that grade. So your five, your five thirty-two, um, Inspector Lead, that is Building Inspector Two right now is currently in that five thirty-two range.
I need to put a per hour, it is on my, no, just the grade.
I mean, just as the grade. But it's, it's Wickman's motion here, I don't want to.
Yeah, we are leaving the job description, and part of the job description includes the, uh, grade. So it's always, it's all on the job description, so we're, we're covered.
Okay. So is there additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Susan, I'll make a motion to approve the job description and pay for the, um, County Inspector Two.
Second.
Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Susan, I will approve the job description and pay for the position of County Inspector One.
Second.
By Wickman, second by Shay, go for the County Inspector One. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Great, thank you very much, Matt.
Oh, one, if I can, Susan. Matt, um, I know you showed the savings that, uh, could possibly happen this year, before you come back to us with, uh, adding a person. Can you provide us, uh, some totals for the last three years, two years at least, on the revenues from your permits?
Yes. I'm not adding anybody.
No, but, but there's potential there, for one.
No, but this subtracts a person now.
Yeah.
There's three positions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you showed us four.
That's the current setup that we had, but then with the approval of these job descriptions, it's three positions, three employable.
So you're not coming back for, as of next year?
I'm not coming back for another person, unless there was a giant swing in construction and we had some big boom happen, that would be the only time at which we'd come back and say we have too much work for the employees that we have.
Okay, but you can still provide us with the, uh...
Yes, with the revenues. Because we've been tracking those with the storm damage that we have. I mean, we know that we're gonna be down in revenues this year because we waived some permit fees and people who were going to build obviously got stuck with some, um, reconstruction projects versus new build projects. So we probably will be down with revenues, but the last few years would should definitely give you a showing on what that would be.
That's what I'd like to see, if you can get that.
I got one question, how long does your cars typically last? Five years? Six?
No, uh, I think the last ones went ten and eight.
Oh, good. Good.
Yeah, we get some pretty good life out of the vehicles.
Okay.
We tried to, we tried to make it up to a hundred and fifty thousand miles this last go-around, and, um, that didn't work out so well with one of them, but... that didn't work out so well with one of them, but the other two did okay. Yeah, we won't be, and that is, so that's another savings that's coming out of our department this year was we had budgeted for vehicles this year. With our budget savings we had last year, we were able to purchase those vehicles. So those funds are still there for the purchase of the vehicles this year that aren't going to be used because we already bought the vehicles, not gonna double up and buy more, so I mean those.
Good job.
And the vehicles that you got, you know, to put all those miles on, they were Ford's, weren't they?
We had one Ford, three Chevys. Yeah. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Kristen Bracker, attorney, discussion and or decision to authorize board chair to sign school resource officer operations agreement. Hey, Kristen.
Good morning. Um, real quick, one small change to the SRO agreement that was made, uh, that I did not get onto my copy is the, the year was changed to twenty twenty four before it was. Sorry, the year was changed to twenty twenty four.
Oh, okay.
There it says twenty twenty three, but the, the.
Each of them are paying twenty thousand, that's still in place, so we have two officers.
Yep, we have two officers this year, um, all schools are in twenty thousand dollars. Um, it came to my attention after the school boards had approved the SRO agreement that they will not be losing traditional grant funding or it, the grant funding isn't as we expected it. Um, so I did draft an addendum for this document, so that would have to get approved by the school boards. Um, but the bulk of the agreement has been approved by them so that the SROs can start at the beginning of the school year. Which I think is this week for most people, so.
So are you, are you communicating with the school board or schools?
I am not, the sheriff's office has been communicating with the school board.
Okay, well, you may wanna, yeah, communicate with them too. And I think this addendum would, this last sentence should say that the payment shall be made to the county board of supervisors. Um, so we know where, where this money's, we're the keepers of the money supposedly. We get, we get told what we don't wanna be told, we get told what we wanna be told, so, you know.
I can absolutely add that change.
Um. So do we know which schools it was then?
Yes.
The same ones?
It's the same ones, it's Trana, Underwood, HSTW and Trey Center.
Okay. So the grant money didn't come?
Hey, I don't know that it didn't come or there wasn't an actual grant for this position. Uh, the schools are using state funding to fund the position, but it's not traditional grant money.
Good, thank you.
And during the last legislative session, there was a proposal out there that the state would fund an SRO for each school district and it was pulled out at the last reading.
Yeah.
So maybe there's a chance that we can get that back.
Yeah.
Into the session for next year for consideration, but we need the schools to lobby on that behalf as well. It's not just the board of supervisors asking for it.
I had a, a personal, uh, discussion with the superintendent of schools for trainer. Uh, and they were very appreciative of the, of the, uh, school resource officer being there at the school. They, they do use him for a lot of, a lot of things. And I appreciate, uh, I appreciate that, uh, that being in place.
Okay, so like the hundred comes back to us?
Yes, and I can absolutely add, uh, the board supervisors on to.
The budget.
That needs to be, budget all up and, um, change the budget all up.
The budget for the sheriff should increase a hundred also.
It's, it was already in there for his revenue.
Okay.
In the budget.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Right, but if you're gonna change it from his to yours, that needs to be amended probably.
Okay.
Would you rather we just left it in the sheriff's for this year and?
Make sure we see it, we can give it to the sheriff.
Make copies of it, I mean, we can run that line item, show you the copies of.
Okay, good.
MR.
Good.
So Kristen, if I may, wh- where are you making that change in the addendum?
Yes, in the addendum.
Okay, question.
I, I can direct it wherever it needs to go, but I don't know that it necessarily matters because they'll be paying, they should be paying the treasurer's office and so.
That's where ours will go.
The, uh, the contract that was signed, um, prematurely by the schools is the one that we have in our packet.
With the exception of theirs is for the year of twenty twenty four and the one I sent in said twenty twenty three still.
Yeah, we got a little bit ahead of ourselves in getting that signed, um, the. So do we need to have the contract re-signed by the districts?
Um, I don't think the contract needs to, I, they can sign the addendum.
I think. You'll put signature blocks on the addendum?
You can do that, yeah.
Okay, I can live with that. So with that, Susan, I will make a motion to authorize the board chair to sign the school resource officer op- operations agreement and addendum A.
Second.
Kristen, I really do appreciate your work on this, I really do.
I, I don't feel that the board of supervisors is an active party to this agreement. Um, I don't know what our signature actually adds to the document. Um, I reviewed it and had some thoughts on things that we could include, but it, it was too late. Um, I, I would say we're more like an acknowledged by the board of supervisors.
Well, um, the only thing I would say is when we discussed this with, um, county attorney Wilbur. Um, this is, uh, similar, very similar to a twenty eight E agreement. Which, we are the executive branch of the county and those need to be signed by us.
Need to be wearable.
So that's the reason we're doing this, that requires your signature, is that correct, Matt?
It's, I would agree, it's twenty eight E-ish.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not the formal.
It's not a public entity that we're partnering with.
That's not a great legal, uh, opinion, but I think that's, uh, analogy.
We'll go with it.
There's no problem with you signing it, I mean, probably if you're making the change to the addendum that adds that the money is gonna get paid to the board of supervisors, that probably provides a little extra justification for you being parties to the agreement as well. But I don't disagree with, uh, Chair Person Miller, I mean, I don't know that you're, you don't really have any duties to perform under this, uh, agreement. But I don't think it's a bad idea to have you sign off on it.
Well, we should be aware of it, if we're, if we're doing business with any public candidate, any of the cities or schools or anything, we should be aware of that agreement.
Well, especially just because it involves a hundred thousand in financing, I mean.
Right.
Whether or not that's, you know, we're getting it, paying it out, I mean, it's, uh, you're the, you are the fiscal agents for the county. So you should, uh, certainly be aware of agreements that we're spending and bringing in six figures.
Yeah. Where, where our personnel's at.
Well, I mean, that can be a discussion for any time, it doesn't have to be today. However, um, for the most part, I agree with you, Matt. Um, but if this, if Potawatomi County is providing a service to someone else other than our residents like a, a business, a school district, something like that, that is a responsibility of the board. In my.
All right, with that, we have a motion by Wickman and a second by Bill to approve um, the board chair to sign the school resource operations agreement and addendum A. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carry. All right, thank you very much, Kristen. And you'll send us the revised addendum A with the signature blocks on it. Okay, cool. All right, next, um, discussion and or decision on the position of the director chief medical examiner investigator. Sherry. All right, so during the closed session held last week, August thirteenth, there was a conversation with all related parties in attendance, including the county medical examiner, Dr. Elliott and director chief medical examiner investigator, Sherry Dahlheim about the administrative duties of the director chief medical examiner investigator position and whether the board and the medical examiner's office should be moving in a different direction than at present. The operation of the medical examiner's office as far as investigating deaths has been exemplary. However, there have been some major issues with administrative duties, billing and communication. Dr. Elliott was unable to be here today, but his recommendation is that we terminate the contract of Sherry Dahlheim utili- utilizing the at-will clause in that contract with payment of thirty days severance.
Uh, with that, Susan, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the at-will termination with thirty days of severance of the contract and employment of the director chief medical examiner.
I'll second that.
Is there additional discussion? All those.
Don't, don't mind, uh, Sherry, just, just my personal opinion. I, I would like to see you continue in some fashion with the county, I think you have the expertise that is needed uh, in this office, uh, so that's why I'm here. You, you will be able to, to find a way to, to get back into that department.
I mean, uh, what's on the agenda today?
I, I understand.
Okay, we have a motion by Wickman and a second by Jorgensen. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Sherry. Um, committee appointments. Um, we've got some dates I need to, oh, first of all, thank you all for attending the town hall out in Oakland last week. I know that was time well spent, I got lots of good comments, we had lots of good coverage. Um. Meeting next week. I talked to Jeanette, that's when we got the groundbreaking for the new hospital. And Jeanette doesn't have anything on the agenda for next week. So we may be canceling the meeting altogether for next week. Unless we wanna start it at noon.
If we got stuff on the agenda that needs done, I'm okay with that.
So more, more to come, but plan on attending the groundbreaking at ten eight AM.
If, you know, if you can't start at noon, maybe you can start at six, I think you may consider starting at six.
In the morning?
Yeah.
That works.
Really nothing.
Six o'clock in the morning?
Make up something.
I'll call in.
All right, and then September twenty third, the chamber reached out as far as the state of the county address. Well, they asked for a date and a couple of us suggested Monday, September twenty third would work out well. Um, does anybody have any conflicts with that date? And that's where we just.
I, um, personally think that's, uh, the correct date. Um, that prior Thursday, uh, we're having the, um, I think it's that Thursday, we're having the department head elected official retreat.
Yes.
So that's nice that it's before that, so it's like, pretty decent time.
Have all of our ducks in a row?
Yeah.
Okay. The Rock. The road operations.
Roll secondary, roll, yeah.
Okay, Brian, any other updates?
Uh, last week was the VA. And, uh, conservation board, we had a meeting on towers for the nine one one sheriff's office towers. Um, of course, we done the town hall, then, uh, had some meetings out the rock center. And then Paul over at the VA lab, and they had a special breakfast for him last Thursday, which was kinda neat to say goodbye. And, uh, let's see, then some payroll stuff, meetings on that. Um. And we done the West Potawatomi County Fair check. And then I went out, represented the county on the, or the board on the Minden cookout, the survivors deal. That was a really nice turnout and people were, it, it was neat. I'm, I'm glad I went, I'm glad I was there, I talked to everybody and, uh, everybody seemed pretty appreciative of everything we've done, so.
Yeah. Tim?
Map for this week and we'll see what they got.
Moving to public comments. Did you sign up? All right, now begins our public comment portion of the agenda. In an effort to protect the privacy of individuals and reduce the potential broadcasting of defamatory and or confidential information. Our live broadcast will now end, information regarding public comments and the.